Call this section back to the corner. No, I just, I just meant here, here.
Members of the board see pretty well?
Yeah, just maybe you step on the other side.
Like over here?
No.
Oh, you want me to be over here?
Just because there's still noise in the hallway.
Oh, do you want me to just close one of the doors?
I don't, we'll probably keep it open.
Okay, that's fair.
Um, alright, so next up is the redevelopment plan. Review and report of the Lower George II redevelopment plan. Proposed redevelopment plan for block 120, lots 4, 5.01, and 7. Um, presenting to us is Dan Dominguéz. We will swear you in just for fun, so please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
It's Daniel Dominguéz, D-O-M-I-N-G-U-E-Z.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing above the truth?
I do.
Excellent, please proceed.
Alright, thank you members of the planning board for having me tonight. I know we just had a long application and I'm just dragging this out a little bit longer. Uh, so bear with me. Uh, right now, what we are, the city is looking to propose here is a redevelopment overlay plan for, uh, we're calling it the Lower George II Plan because there is an existing Lower George Plan that covers this block and I think this block and maybe two to four subsequent blocks down here. Uh, it just felt like a good name for it without being too hyper-specific about, uh, the project. Um, what the city is looking to do is to create a development plan that will be able to allow the Abundant Life Church, which is the owner of this largest parcel, if you can make out the three different parcels. I think this is 5.01, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, and they have been looking to redevelop the site for, I think, since the 90s. Uh, as you've, if you've been by there, you'll know that there's a church that's about here. And the rest of it is just sort of gravel and dirt that they use for parking. Uh, it's, I think, about 50,000 square feet, maybe a little bit more than that. So it's well over an acre of land. Uh, it's highly underutilized. It's Zone C4 downtown, uh, zoning. Uh, so same as the project that we just had here, although that was under the redevelopment plan. But for context, it's the same as where we are right now downtown, adjacent to the train station. This is actually the, essentially, the, um, south, I don't know if it's southwest or east off the top I have right now, but this is sort of the southern periphery of the C4 zone for this block. Um, uh, you may be wondering, why is it not the whole block?
Bravo Road.
Huh?
That Bravo Road.
This is Bravo and sort of a liquor store that's sort of physically attached to it. Uh, the church has made a progress to, I'll just, we'll give some pre-context of that. The church has a development partner. The church is not a re developer, they're not a developer. They've sought out a developer, uh, they worked for years now, I think, through COVID. Uh, I think the first conversation I had with them was in 2019. This is before they had the developer where they were sort of gearing this up again for the last 30 years. Um, and so they have a partner. They've approached here and have not gotten anywhere. The Bravo does not want to sell. And, uh, I think the liquor store does want to sell, but they weren't able to make anything work. Um, on this side, you have the larger parcel with the church. This is just one tiny little nub of parcel that is, I think it's fenced in right now. Uh, or not fenced in, maybe the church's parcel is fenced in and it kind of fences it in. Uh, it was probably a house that burned down many, many years ago. Uh, but there's nothing there now. It just happens to be, so the church sort of, like a giant, uh, oddly shaped thing sort of covers it up on both sides and then all around here. This is, I think, there's a mixed-use building there. Uh, I don't think the church has any interest in necessarily acquiring the mixed-use building, but since that is still ambiguous, it was better to leave it in the plan in case it were to get subsumed within the rest of the project, uh, because it's still possible. Whereas this is highly unlikely. This just, this parcel here at the corner just got zoning board approval last year, maybe early this year, for, I think, 18 units. Uh, so that's moving on its way to redevelopment. And this is where the, um, the community garden, community farm is, but it's also a cemetery. And so it's basically undevelopable even under the best of circumstances. So you are left with this shape. And there's nothing wrong with that, it's just kind of odd looking on a map, but it's very large. And so you can accommodate a lot of the sins of the shape. Uh, there's also, and it's also particularly helpful given the circumstances, there's also the, um, the Lyle Brook. Uh, I don't know if it's a, what's a term that I would look for? Culver, would that be the right term?
Culver?
Yes, it's pretty massive, uh, brick culver from the 1800s. It runs all the way out to the Raridan River, at least the canal side, and dumps a lot of storm water. It runs through this parcel. It actually runs slightly under the church, uh, which used to be a car dealership. And I guess they, back in the day when there were no rules about stuff, you'd just build a car dealership on top of a culver. Um, so that's just how that came to be. So, now with that context, uh, in none, in utilizing the sort of, the context of the underlying C4 zone and, uh, the desires of the church to be redeveloped, have, uh, an adequate parking space, maximize the utility of their space. Uh, they have this development partner and we've developed a redevelopment plan that hopefully would accomplish the goals that they're seeking. Now, to jump into highlights, if you will, uh, for permitted uses, we're basically operating under the, this is page 7 by the way. Uh, we're basically operating under the permitted uses of the C4 zone, with the exception that we are carving out nightclubs, bars and taverns, liquor stores, smoke shops and smoking lounges. Uh, the reason for carving those out is that this all right here is a relatively, uh, it's like a townhome community. And we wanted to minimize the amount of potential nuisance or noise generating activities on the site that could then become a problem at 11 o'clock, midnight, 1:00 AM, spill over noise issues to the site. Is that what you're asking a question or are you just?
Uh, yeah, man, I'll say here, uh, bars and taverns.
Yeah.
Restaurant, though.
No, restaurant would be a restaurant. A bar and a tavern is somewhere where it's primarily alcohol-based. If you have a restaurant and you happen to have a bar within it where people can get drinks at, that is not a bar as an establishment.
I just want to create the distinction because, I mean, adult-based entertainment without, that really sounds weird saying, but you're, you're, if I live someplace, that might be a perk for me. If I live across the street, I'm like, hey, it's a great bar, let's go there and watch the Giants game. I wouldn't want that to be carved out of their ability to create it. It's just me talking.
Okay, I understand. We're trying to, we're trying to be cautious about, uh, the impact on this neighborhood over here. Um, there's also a lot of bars like just over here, you know, it's not too far.
Fair enough, there's a difference between that and restaurants and I'm just going to continue to shut.
So it's very subject.
Alright.
Alright, now, uh, so if you go down further, uh, you'll notice the bulk table. The bulk table is more or less just like the C4 zone with some notable exceptions. One is the lot width and lot depth. Uh, the reason that we went with 120 feet is because of the irregular shape of the site. Uh, could otherwise create issues where you don't have conforming maybe 200-foot lengths on all sides. But you have the area, you have significant area, so the lot width and depth are essentially, uh, irrelevant uh, because you don't have very tiny entrance points or anything. Uh, and then the kind of the really big issue here that was, is going to come up in discussion is that the height, the, the height is looking for a 450-foot height on the building. And I want to clarify that right here where it says including rooftop, that is a typo uh, because that is supposed to say excluding the mechanicals in the bulkhead. So the mechanicals in the bulkhead are not something we ever really include in our height calculations for any developments in the city. Uh, this is what happens when you proofread in an airplane on a small laptop. So I apologize. Um, but so it would be up to 450 feet to the roof line for up to 20% of the building coverage of the building, uh, as long as they had up 10% forebowl housing. And to further that, I do have renderings of the proposed concept for the building just to, because I think that you may actually want to see it. Um, and given the other stuff is a little bit more just technical, I'll just, I'll just jump in if you would like I show the, the building a little bit. Yeah. Um, so let's see. So we'll start with this one, which is, and we can mark this one as, that one's already in the plan, so I'll mark this one as A1. Uh, this is a crude, relatively crude rendering of the building as you would see it from Route 18 coming into town. It's not, it's not as boxy as you'll see in the renderings themselves, but this is just one image. Do you have it? Okay. Um, so the, this portion would be up to 450. Uh, and I believe this portion would be somewhere in the threes, maybe even compliant with the underlying zoning, or at least with, uh, what would be the regular C4 redevelopment plan. Um, so that gives you sort of one idea for scale, but let's just jump into the actual rendering that actually shows a little bit of what the building looks like. Um, let's see, first, minus 22. So this is the building view from Nielsen Street. Uh, that's the building view from sort of Tabernacle. And I'll see if I can get the other one to fit on here without both of them knocking down. Um, a green.
Man, can you point to where the Bravo is in this? Why are these just, I'm just kind of covered with only, I mean.
That's the Bravo.
Okay.
That's the church, which will exist and can continue existing.
That's George Street.
This is George Street, yeah.
The other building is back off of George Street.
That's closer Nielsen, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, so this, so this right here, this one is the sort of George Street side, yeah. So that's the Bravo building, that's the church. Uh, and this is sort of, you know, parking deck, amenities, space, yada, yada. And so this is the tall part of the building, this is the, the shorter side of it. And, uh, yeah, that's what the building would concept, conceptually would look like.
So the church is not being redeveloped as part of it?
No, so the church is staying. It might get, you know, a job or something. Uh, and as part of this, the church would get, uh, most likely right here, its own sort of dedicated, well-done site plan review parking lot. And, uh, the idea would be that there would be some level of integration with onsite parking shared with the church for church services as well.
Dan, what they're looking at overall here, obviously this is just a conceptual point, this is going to be a mixed-use building?
Yeah, uh, minimal, like, let's call it relatively light mixed-use, kind of, a little bit like, uh, like the project that we saw here today. Uh, it's not intended to be a significant amount of mixed-use. In talking to the developers, they were looking at doing something on one of the floors like, uh, where it's like indoor rec, like a bowling alley or something, which would be like more than a cafe, like a bowling alley or, um, rock climbing or something on one of the floors, I forget. Uh, but, but yeah, so there would be some level of mixed-use for sure, but not.
450 feet, what's the initial value?
Uh, well, a lot of it is, I think there's a six-story parking deck to it. Some of it's subterranean, I believe, I think two of the stories are subterranean, but a lot of the building is parking deck. And so part of the, part of the situation here with the height is for the sake of massing for the parking deck, the, I, I mean, listen, if the board acts favorably, council acts favorably, the plan is the plan, uh, the re developer would have to actually submit a real application. Uh, in the conversations that I've had and the concepts I've seen, they are looking to, this, this will be fully parked out, the, the building. Um, there's not, they're not looking for a parking variance or they have a significant massive parking structure under here. Uh, I think with, I want to say in the 600s of parking spaces, um, offhand. And, uh, and so to accomplish the massing of that appropriately, they, they're trying to divert where the residential components are in the building toward vertically. And you'll see that the FAR here is 20, which is what's allowed in the underlying zoning, and the concepts I've seen are around 18. So they're under, they're well under what's permitted in the underlying zoning. The only change here, and it's not insignificant, uh, but it's the, really the only deviation is that they're looking to mass some of that vertically rather than in a box. And they think that it adds, and I wouldn't disagree, that it adds character to the building and makes it unique and creates a, an interesting welcoming building into town from Route 18. If there's any more comments on the design, we can do that or as much as.
So they'll have to also address this, sorry, what is the wording here? The underground.
The actual.
Well, somebody.
Culvert.
Culvert.
They're, 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 uh, so the culver, if I recall correctly, runs basically right through here and basically skates the whole development. So there's going to be, it's something that engineering is going to have to review to make sure that there's appropriate clearance in case we ever need to do maintenance or work in the culver. Um, but it, it should just skate just past it here so that this place is open on the side and it's permanently accessible, I mean, obviously through destruction and breaking down into the ground, but that it's not under the building. Because that would be a huge problem, which it kind of is in the fact that it's under the church now. Uh, and hopefully it never becomes an issue ever, but it's sort of a reality of a problem.
So that's not something that the developer would intend to address, that culver?
Uh, the culver is so old and big and important that we would probably, as a city, prefer that they didn't ever touch it at all in any capacity. It's just, if, we have no idea of the structural integrity of the culver. It's large and it flows a lot of storm water. We want it to live happily ever after without anybody ever bothering it. And then if it ever, any issues ever happen, the city comes in and fixes it.
And erecting this tower will not in any way affect?
They'll have to show that, but yes, I've been talking to, um, the engineering office, not to Mr. Hajar, but in, before Mr. Hajar was there, um, that if they were at least, um, I think that the, it was either five or 10 feet away, that it probably wasn't going to be a meaningful issue.
I don't know, I've got to hear your challenge.
I'm not an engineer.
Is there an issue if it's that old, it's that big, it's that important, something that heavy?
Proceed. But we'll be able to address that if they put forward an application?
Yep, absolutely.
So, alright, Dan, so I want to make sure I understand. We are making a recommendation on this plan to city council. They will, correct?
Yes.
They will adopt it or not? If they adopt it, if we made a recommendation and they adopted it, then the, the developer will have to come before us with a full site plan, full application, correct?
Yes.
Or the zoning board, depending on what they're doing.
Um, they can go to the zoning board.
It's a hassle.
Well, okay, so, so I want to be clear, there's actually a case law where you can go to the zoning board with a redevelopment plan. It's, if, there's only like one case on it, but there is, I think it's out of trend. Um, but typically, uh, the city, and I don't remember if I included it here, we do typically carve out to preclude, uh, de-variants applications from being applicable under the redevelopment plan. But there is at least one legal case of someone who would, the courts forced the town to do actual de-variants redevelopment plan hearing on. I don't know if it ever got approved or not, but they had to designate it.
Any other questions, or Dan or Tom?
So, yeah, I'm not done, I just want to, I just want to, because, because here we're leaders. I know, I know, I know. But that, that was, that was a lot of it, so.
So, I wonder if we're posting it.
Right. So on page 10, uh, as part of, uh, zero emission vehicle infrastructure, the developer would be required to, uh, create off-site EVs. Uh, on-street parking spaces would be upgraded to EVs within, uh, 50 feet of this block. We have to at least four spaces at their expense, running the cables, all the whole shebang, as long as they have to work in conjunction with the parking authority, make sure that, uh, the park authority is satisfied, because there are parking meters most likely, given the neighborhood, and that they will be, you know, at the expense of the developer. I believe that there's also, they'll upgrade and redo and upgrade the, uh, the bike lane that's on Nielsen Street, at least a significant stretch of it, uh, as part of this.
You're saying the EV's got to be done in the street rather than parking?
So, as part of state redevelopment law, uh, this, this is a new thing that they added in, I think it was as part of the EV law changes that happened a year or two ago when we started doing the EV credit stuff. Um, one of the criteria now that you have to include in the redevelopment plans is you have to accommodate for, it's kind of vague the way they handle it, but it's essentially, how are you, to summarize it, how are you going to help roll out public EV infrastructure as part of a redevelopment? And so this is how this redevelopment plan is going to look to tackle that. We're experimenting with this and see how it goes on, on this project.
Just in my opinion, I'm sitting here thinking of this and it doesn't make sense quite because people typically park on the street, it's metered parking.
Yeah.
So you're there for X number of minutes, let's just say an hour, two hours, 13 minutes, whatever it is. So you're going to charge your vehicle in a spot, not necessarily like a parking space that you can park in over 90 or something like that. So you're going to get a couple minutes of parking or an hour of parking. It will take, it'll take, then away from parking for somebody who has any other vehicle.
Well, that person has to pay to park, it's not like it's going to be free, it's going to be a EV. You're still going to have to pay the charge and everything.
But it would only be for EV vehicles?
No, we're not going to eliminate the space where nobody can use it unless you have an EV, but it's there as an option. Because if you, if you do that, then now you're just essentially, in the short term, you're essentially eliminating the space, right? If you, because you have a limited number of people. Over time, it should grow, which, it shouldn't be an issue. But in the short term, you would just be cutting people off. So the idea would be to be open to everybody, but it would have an EV charger. So there would be a preference for parking there in charger, yeah.
Got you, thank you. Are those high-voltage EVs on the street?
That will be subject to the parking authority arrangement with the developer at that point. Um, we don't have any on-street EVs right now, so we'll have to see what, currently can access, what's feasible. I mean, it'd be nice to get 240 volts so you can get like reasonable charging rates, but we'll, we'll see what, what's reasonable and doable onsite and running the current. Um, on page 11, for sign control, uh, we are making, we're doing C4 sign, uh, sta, uh, standards, uh, but we are not allowing for internally illuminated signs. So halo lit would be allowed and some other things. Uh, but the idea is we, again, since we're approximate to a couple of other residences, we don't want to be having the commercial facilities spilling over a ton of active bright lights onto their neighborhoods. So that's sort of just, uh, tackling a nuisance issue. You'll see the additional provisions about the church, uh, about the parking lot, that it can't be demolished in, in parking deck parking spaces, uh, that it won't, that it will be included as part of the site plan, uh, but not subject to the bulk standard to the church is, that's their lot, but the, the purpose of the church's inclusion is to guarantee that they're getting their parking lot and that it's being, uh, you know, all the things that are being promised to them are being included as part of the review that the board is handing, is handling. And, uh, you know, there's no acquisition, it's not an eminent domain redevelopment plan, so that's off the table, there won't be any relocation issues. And that, that's kind of, it's kind of a highlight in the, of the plan. It's, it's nothing too crazy. I mean, I, it's, you know, it's, it's really tall, but what I mean, it's not like a, a very large plan.
Dan, what if it, I mean, this is going to take years if it gets actually in happens.
Right.
But what if two years from now, the church decided they wanted to build a new church? Does this preclude them from demolishing their own building?
It wouldn't preclude them under the redevelopment plan, they would have to do it as their own separate project. Uh, it's just that under this redevelopment plan, they wouldn't be able to knock down the church. And let's say something happens, they're like, hey, you know what, we want to upgrade the church, we want a brand-new building, we still want to do this. They can have a conversation with the city and we can look to see about amending the redevelopment plan then. It's not, but the, but the main goal is to, well, not the main goal, but one of the main goals here is to make sure that the church isn't being taken advantage of or is being sort of swept away in order to just build this thing, that it's sort of a partnership and it's to help keep the church here and make sure that they're getting their mileage out of their property and that they're, uh, improving, uh, their, their land and that area.
Just, I don't know, it just seems like a really odd fit to me in all respects. Can you comment on the impact of this, you know, massive development on this, on the local neighborhood?
Well, I mean, the thing is, right, so besides the height, it essentially complies with all the underlying zoning. So you could more or less build this thing right now, come in here, buy right and have no variance and just build it, except for the height. The height is literally just a massing issue. So the zoning already allows for this. And so that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at on that front, is that it, sometime 20 years ago or thereabouts, they decided to zone the C4 downtown commercial. And then these types of buildings, well, smaller generally, but you know, uh, in terms of height, were permitted. And again, it's sort of just how you stack the Lego blocks. If you put it as like more of a conventional rectangle, it still has the same FAR and it would still be conforming. You just have, uh, the height thing.
What's for like 300?
What, for maximum?
Right, that, what was the current?
So the current maximum in the underlying zoning is 300 and in the redevelopment, downtown redevelopment plan, it's 350, yeah, that's 40,000 square feet.
That was done that way to accommodate for the parking to have.
I'm sorry?
That was done that way to accommodate for the underground parking structure.
Right, well, it's not all underground, right? So it's, yeah, it's significant.
And you had something like 600 spaces and?
Yeah.
Plus it allows more character, or allows for the building to have more character than just a box, square box, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Something that's more attractive.
Yeah, I do think that, that there is an aesthetic consideration to, uh, to the choice of, of going with this massive versus the other.
Has there been a conversation about the total number of units in the building?
I'm sorry?
Has there been a conversation about the proposed number of units in the building?
Yes, um, I don't remember offhand the exact number, but ballpark, it was 750 plus or minus 50. So let's call it 700 to 800 units. It is a lot of units, but it's, you, the FAR tracks. You, you would be able to build that without the redevelopment plan. But yeah, the number does, it does pop.
The number's large and it's always going to be, it's always going to be coordinates or whatever, black and white, right, that says that you can do a thing, it just should do.
Yeah, that's where I'm at too, same kind of.
They still would have to propose a site plan when everything can bow anyway.
Yeah, this is still a common step.
Step one of many steps.
Oh, I think that's good.
Okay, we don't need a reason to shoot it down if they fall within everything as far as a variance. Those, you can't just say, I don't like it.
I don't like it.
But you know, you can't just say that.
And I, I would, I might imagine that the county, when they do their review of it, should go that far of, there, there might be infrastructure improvements that they'll require of them on George Street and, uh, as, as part of their jurisdiction on the project. Uh, but I can't speak for them, so don't, don't hold me to that. But I could imagine that for such a large project that they would require, they did that, uh, they did that on 100 Jersey Avenue and they've done that on other redevelopment projects as well. It's not uncommon for traffic lights this, or road lighting that, or turn lanes this. So it wouldn't be, it would be probable, likely even, that they, they do something on that front. Because at, at this stretch of George Street is their road again. After, I forget, Liberty or thereabouts, it becomes county road downtown right here. Jurisdiction for George Street is city property and then on, on the other ends, it reverts back to the county.
And it's on, it's facing three different roads. That's, that's not a roadway that cuts from George, uh, to the back of the property over that, uh?
I'm sorry, can, can you, can you help me out where, where you're here?
Yeah, the culver.
This? Oh, this, that's like, that's, that's, I think, just like either shadow or gray. That, that's more or less where the culver is going. There, there's no, there's no road, there's no. No.
This is also a project, like this is in good proximity to Douglas for rentals for college students.
It's not, it's not too far, it's not too far. They.
And the area is growing up a little bit down there.
You get back to my, just my question here from a professional planner perspective. What's the, the impact of this kind of, you know, a dense, uh? What's the, the impact of this kind of, you know, a dense, uh, uh, housing go well beyond this particular development area? I'm just wondering how this will affect and character the whole neighborhood positively?
I, I honestly don't know that it's gonna have any meaningful impact in terms of the built character at least. I, you know, it, it stands out, it's gonna be its own thing. And again, not to like harp on it, it would have been more or less been able to be built anyway. But the neighborhood around it is kind of built out already. You have the, the Hope Development Project on the other side of the street. You have the Riverside Townhomes on the other side. The, the, behind it, you have, uh, what do you call it, John Fracano Towers. There might be like some gradual redevelopment, like natural, let's call it natural redevelopment opportunities further up the street uh, in those underlying zonings. But I don't think this is going to change, you know, dramatically the situation there. And also if it abuts, you know, uh, where is it? Two ta, there's, this is a large building. You have right off, uh, screen here, you've got Rockoff Hall, SoCam 290, whatever you want to call it. You have the Standard, you have, uh, the George. And then you're just approaching into downtown where you have like all the high rises anyway. So this is just at the periphery of that. What it also does is in positives for the neighborhood is that it cleans up a kind of derelict site. And, uh, it gets rid of, uh, the negative impacts of what that's doing. And I couldn't probably legally blight the site, but it, I would define parts of it as sort of a blight. Uh, and this would eliminate, uh, that issue there. And it would make the church better, make the neighborhood better, probably safer, more active.
Most of what's happening on, you know, is just parking, parking.
And they use, they just fill it up with cars when they have church. That's it. That's it. And then it's empty. It's completely empty. Yeah.
And it's hard to argue that.
Yeah, if I, uh, if I recall correctly from old tax maps, I think that's a very significant parts of the, uh, especially this part over here used to be like narrow lot homes, row homes and the like that burned down or were demolished at some point or another. Uh, I don't know the context of why they don't exist anymore, but I remember seeing several tiny parcels on old tax maps on this side. So I'm guessing the church may like purchased those, uh, those lands at some point or another with the dream of doing this redevelopment or some kind of redevelopment that they've been kicking around since, uh, inside of that elementary school.
Any other questions for Dan? Open up to the public. We're already, you're signed in, so.
Charlie Cradaville, um, just a couple of questions. I appreciate the presentation. Can the witness please identify the developer?
I gotta be honest with you, I don't remember their name. Uh, it's not a developer that I know to, that knowingly has done business in New Brunswick before. I want to say that they are out of Brooklyn, that they've done work in, in New York City, but that this is one of their first forays into New Jersey. Maybe they've done work in Jersey City, but I don't want to claim that because I might be wrong and lying about that. But yeah, so they're, they're a non, they're not like a, an entity that's done work here before.
Thank you. So I do see they obviously hired Fogarty, Fager, that's their architects. If I follow up, would you be able to tell me the developer, you know, in future?
Yeah, I can probably email you tomorrow.
That's good enough, thank you. And then the only other, you know, question, point I wanted to make is, was it also, you know, did, uh, was a little shocking to hear the, the number 450 feet and, and the, the potential number of units. I'm curious how that compares to the FAR redevelopment plan. Isn't that also 300, 350?
Um, I think the FAR is 3, 300 or 350. And, uh, they are, I think, considering a residential, there is a residential factor in there, but I don't, there's never been really a discussion of units over there.
Okay, I guess I would just be curious then why, why 450 for this plot of land that's on the periphery of downtown when, you know, the sort of primus real estate across from the train station is, 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 you know, full hundred feet left?
I'll take that into consideration and I'll amend the plan. So maybe we could just do that, go 450 of the FARs.
I'm just making a point.
Yeah, no, I know.
It does, uh, does, does seem a little bit, uh, inconsistent, but I just wanted to raise that point and thank you for hearing me on answering my questions.
No, I, I think there are gonna be raised concerns and questions if a plan is brought forward to the board and then we'll have that opportunity to learn more about. So, yeah, I, when it, what it really, which also could change before it comes to us. Those are very early
Yeah.
renditions, right?
I'm writing out the dirt parking lot and presumably I need to.
Yep. So, uh, looking for a motion for a recommendation, you're gonna, you are gonna make that typo correction?
Correct.
Okay. With the one typo correction, either a recommendation to recommend as amended to the city council or not recommended to a, have a
Motion to recommend this to the city council.
One second.
Are you gonna, can you take, oh, no.
All right, Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
Zach Wright?
Yes.
Diana Lopez? Chris Delatella?
Yes.
Suzanne Ludwig? Karina Lengas?
Yes.
And Yelena Chakov?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.